I'd like to call the October 2nd, 2018 City Council Meeting for the city of Duval to order. Would you please rise from the flagpole led by Councilmember Diane Britton?
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mark, would you please take your role? Councilmember Nicky.
Here.
Councilmember Iyer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie King.
Here.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Naflin.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a call. Thank you. Under additions or corrections to the agenda, under consent agenda, please add payroll for September 20th, 2018 in the amount of $42,324.57, and payroll for October 5th, 2018 in the amount of $111,728.93, and claims in the amount of $131,710.43. Are there any councilmembers that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember Walker. Alright. Just a second. And do we have adoption of the council agenda this evening? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We do not have anything under ratification of contracts under declaration of emergency, so we'll move straight to comments from the audience. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium and give your name if you're with an organization, the organization, and your home address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Linderfeldt. I live at 14124284 Place Northeast Duval, Washington. I'm here as part of the Junior Red Bulls Board, as well as a loving citizen of just shy of 17 years, 27 days to be exact. We're here tonight just to discuss with you the equity of the Big Rock Field. So, as the loveiest past, we wanted to bring to your attention, as our voice for the city, as you've set policy for next year, the opportunity to look at how the field has been divvied up and how contracts have been written for baseball and for soccer this year, and just the opportunity for all organizations in this community to have fair and equitable space and time. Just to give you a few bullets of history, and I'm going to ask one of our coaches to stand up and talk. We've been working with you guys, actually, I think we were one of the first to come and rent the field when it opened last October. We moved immediately from Cedar Crest High School, very excited. This year, we've been working, our president, Casey McCleary, very tired, let's say, with the planning department to try to come with some fair and equitable times. Unfortunately, we've, you know, been stuck with times of 7:30 to 9:30, which has been really taxing on our kids, on our coaches, on our families. And we're just hoping that, from this meeting today, you hear our voice, that we hope that as we look at next year, we have the opportunity to have more opportunity for everybody to have equal time and space there. So, thank you for your time, and I'll turn it to John Fialla.
Hello, John Fialla, living at 12113268 Drive, Northeast Duval. And I am a junior Red Bulls coach. I've been with the program for four years. I've been the head coach and had the opportunity to be able to coach these young men in this program, which has been fantastic. And so, I want to kind of give a perspective of as a coach and also as a parent, and also the opportunity to coach lacrosse here for several years also. But, we're at a point where my job as a coach is to teach these kids life lessons, these student athletes, and I teach them hard work, discipline, and effort. All those things that you learn in sports that you carry over in school and in life and in family with your brothers and sisters. Those are the opportunities that, I love coaching in athletics, but I worry there's a problem right now. In our program right now, where we are faced with these, the practice times from 7:30 to 9:30 at night, it is taxing on those kids. I mean, you have third graders up to eighth graders, where a lot of these third graders should be in bed by 8 o'clock when practice is starting at 7:30. It is wearing on our kids. And so, not just as our kids, but also as coaches. I mean, we are all busy coaches. We're coaching at evening times, but we're also working. We get home, we finish practice at 9:30 at night, we get off the field, we've got to be able to organize. And we get, I get home at 10:07, three nights in a row, day after day after day. It's wearing, it's wearing as an adult. And what I worry about is the ability for our kids to be able to handle that. I know that my son, who is in sixth grade, when he comes Friday morning, he is an absolute wreck. We all know what kids are like when they have not much sleep and how they feel, and I worry about how they're going to respond at school. And so, that is something that is a big concern for me, because something's going to get, and it's not going to be school, and it's going to be athletics. And if I worry about the athletics going partly, there's a lot of life lessons these kids are not going to be able to understand, be able to learn. And so, that's a big concern for us. And so, you know, we can do, our practice is late at night one time, but day after day after day, it gets wearing. We're at a point in our season right now where we should be excelling, and for me to be able to actually look these kids' eyes when they're fatigued and they're tired and they're not as excited because it is wearing, it's a grind. Football season's a grind anyways. But we have those times, it just puts a lot of pressure, not just on coaches, but on the kids, on their schoolwork, and then also on the families. And so, just know that we love being out there. It's a great facility compared to a lot of the places that we're involved with, on grass fields around the community. So, I just wish you'd take a conservative of where we are and just kind of how taxing it can be on our program and where it's going to take us, where we are, and it's going to take a step back and have these kids are not going to sign up, they're going to hold off for years because it's just too late for them. It's too late for me as an adult. I wish I could schedule naptime during one of the drills, but it's just too late. So, I just want to be able to share your perspective as a coach and also as a parent. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Erica Heda. I live at 28106 Northeast 145th Court in Duval, Washington. And I've lived in Duval since 1988 when my parents moved here from Boise, Idaho. So, I'm here in three different capacities today. One is a board member representing our program, our parents, our football players and cheerleaders, as a teacher within Riverview School District, my affected tired students, and also as a parent of a football player and a sophomore cheerleader. Over the years, the football has been seeing declining numbers for a number of different reasons. Whether it's a high-profile player who commits suicide or concussion-high media, our sport is increasingly under attack and we see declining numbers. Throughout the Getchiko League, last year we had 95 teams. This year, we're only able to have 73. We're not able to build a varsity team because we have four players sign up, and we had to send those players to other programs, Windville and Redmond. If we have declining numbers, that's declining dollars into our program, and we use those dollars to send coaches to trainings on new tackling techniques to help improve safety and new equipment, which also serves safety. So, if parents are having to consider handling a kid in a program that's going to run from 7:30 to 9:30, that's directly taking dollars out of our program, which directly impacts player safety. And here as a teacher, I teach a total middle school. I primarily have to teach sixth grade. I've been a teacher for four years, and I often see players at school or having in class. I directly see the impact of the late-night practices impacting their schoolwork and their ability to stay awake and focus at school. I hear from my players and my students that they are just too tired. I know that football is a place where some kids find meaning and purpose and that they will only do their schoolwork in order to participate in a sport. And two years ago, I had a meeting with one of our Red Bulls coaches about a student who was failing, and he wouldn't do his work. And the coach worked with me as his teacher and board member to get this kid to pass during the fall season. So, I know the positive effects that participating in sports can have. My daughter, she has chaired for the program for three years. She started out in Monroe, chairing there. She's a kid who suffers with, she's not a very confident kid. You see her in class, and she often struggles with her self-confidence. However, you put her in front of some pom-poms and you put her in front of a football crowd, and she is one of the most confident cheerleaders there is. She's often a leader and looked up to as one of the kids who knows the routines, even though she's one of the hands of the team. If we don't have football teams, we don't have cheerleaders. And my heart aches for what will happen to my daughter and her self-confidence with not being able to enroll her in some kind of program that boosts her self-confidence. My son, he loves football. Frankie loves football. He's played since he was five. And I would ask just for three more seconds of your time. We took him to Monroe five nights a week to play for three seasons because he loved it so much. And the Red Bulls program did not have a program starting for five-year-olds. He looks up to his dad, who is the high school football coach, who played in college and who also played in high school. My son considers himself a coach and can also be found on the sidelines of the high school games as a ball boy or coaching up another player that's twice his age. He watches film without being asked. He watches football games on the weekends. He watches YouTube videos of old games. He reads the playbook without being asked, and he's nine. And for the first time in five years, last week, he looked at me and he said, "Mom, do I have to go to practice? I'm just too tired." That is what this late-night, 7:30 to 9:30 is doing to kids of our community. And I would ask that you would highly consider the equitability that you've given to our program and access at that field. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Hello, I'm Carol Vanoy. I'm president of the Riverview School Board, and I work for the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network. My address is 31719 Northeast 115th Place in Carnation, and I have lived here forever. So, anyway, I want to thank you guys for all you do. I'm here tonight to advocate, I know you're in the process of budget, to advocate for Health and Human Service dollars. I know some other cities in the valley are giving a percentage of their budgets to allocate to Health and Human Service. Recently, we heard that the number was going to be reduced from what it was last year. And this makes us very sad because we feel that our seniors, our young people, our families are worth the investment from the cities in the Snoqualmie Valleys. So, I believe Snoqualmie is giving 1.38 of their total budget to Health and Human Service. You know, we have growing needs, we have homeless families, we have youth that need extra support. So, and as I get older, we have seniors that need extra support too. So, anyway, we'd just like you in the process to consider not cutting Health and Human Services and coming and thinking about, as a growing city, a wonderful place to live, what would be an appropriate percentage of your budget amount to go to Health and Human Services. I know budgeting is a hard decision, so I want to thank you for your consideration. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak this evening? Okay. We'll move on to schedule items. Under mayor's report, we are on a tight timeline. There's a subjanitor tonight, so we have to be out done with our meeting by 8:15 and out by 8:30. So, I will defer my report to the next meeting. But I will say thank you to staff for all of the work on the budget, and thank you for your hard work on the presentations this evening and the month to come. With that, Councilmember Walker.
I'll try to be brief as well, given that time constraint. As I mentioned in committee, there is a immediate request for council representation on a committee. A committee is formed by the Department of Ecology. The committee is called the Watershed Restoration Enhancement Committee to form local policy. In this instance, local would be the city of Duval's component of Snoqualmie and Watershed to consider funding allocations directed by the first decision. They're requesting a prime attendee and an alternate. The meeting location that is scheduled now is at the Everett Public Library. It is going to be on October 25th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The time commitment is approximately four hours a month to begin, and that duration will go about six to eight months. And it would be probably some pre-meeting prep and afterwards things to take care of as well for that attendee. They're asking for a primary attendee and an alternate. I believe Councilmember Remington has expressed interest as a member of the Watershed Forum, which this would fit into the same staff and the similar policy initiatives that the Forum's involved with. I'd be willing to serve as alternate unless there's anyone else who would like to begin to know what the Forum does and to meet the staff and to understand the lay of land with that organization. But, go ahead.
I'd be willing to serve as an alternate. If you're offering to be an alternate because you aren't sure if anyone else will do it, I would be happy to do it, but if you would like to do it?
No. Plenty on my plate, which I keep trying to reduce, which keeps growing to a bigger plate. But, I think that would be great, and I hear that you can speak for yourself, sir.
Or we can simplify it. Do we have a motion to support Councilmember Remington as the primary and Councilmember Naflin as the alternate?
I'd give that motion, but in discussion. Wait for a second.
Do you have a motion? Is anybody willing to do a motion right now?
I'm willing to move, for the purpose of discussion. That way, Councilmember Remington can say yes or no during discussion. How's your?
No. All right. We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I'd be more than happy to participate fully in that. I have a schedule between our meetings. I believe that's going to work out just fine for me.
Great.
With some background, 20 years as a water system operator, it seems to fit in with some of the other things they discuss about wells. Be happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mayor Britton there?
Yeah, I'm on the Snoqualmie Watershed Committee. Yes, so I'll be, so we could probably compare those and work here a little bit.
Any further comments?
One comment that after this is done, we can staff for Mayor Placer from Ecology as soon as possible, since they're holding this.
Well, now that the budget is presented, we will have that opportunity. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Congratulations, Councilmember Remington and Councilmember Naflin. Thank you for helping out with that, Councilmember Walker. It's been quite a rough few weeks as far as responding to emails for all us at the staff level and keeping track of that was much appreciated, so thank you. Next up, we have our administration report by interim city administrator and planning director, Ms. Laura Thomas.
Good evening, mayor, council, and members of the committee. I will try to make it as brief as possible. So, again, we keep doing kind of the same updates every couple of weeks. So, again, Ways Bar Treatment Plant, Public Works Director update. Our operator too began employment last Tuesday. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, feel free to go down to the Ways Bar Treatment Plant and introduce yourself. Public Works Director job recruitment. We will start the official process of recruitment by the end of this week. So, stay tuned. We'll be allowing about a four-week candidate search that's internal. So, if you know anybody that might be interested or is qualified, please let us know. One item that we're going to be working on is a facility rental policy update. This is for our buildings. It'll create a cohesive policy and a rental application. And we're looking at doing this for the depot building, the visitor center, and the Rose Room. It will also help us set fees. And then, what we'll come back and talk to council at once we've drafted it is, do you want to allow, this is one of those items that usually comes up for every city, is do you want to allow alcohol in those facilities? Do you want deposits? How much should they be? Do you want nonprofit discounts? And do you want a group usage hierarchy, or do you want a more equitable solution? It was actually plenty if the Red Bulls came and talked this evening because Councilmember Remington and myself met with the Red Bulls last week and definitely listened to the story that they had to tell about the challenges they've had this year with having younger athletes on the fields late at night. And so, out of that meeting, I thought it would be important for the city to create an advisory committee to create a field use policy. This was something that Public Works and Alsey Parks started earlier in the year, but it wasn't completed. And so, we'd like to create a committee and host two meetings, and then come back and present a policy that's been jointly worked on by the different user groups. Our next meeting will be bringing forward an ILA with this, Windenville. We had a good meeting with that division last week and their chief and deputy chief. And so, we'll be bringing forward a formal resolution and an ILA. Maybe not a resolution, but an ILA and an agenda though. We have a draft of it already, but our internal departments are reviewing it, and I'd also like Chief Burke to review it as well. And following that will be an associated fee resolution. It is pretty important that we do complete this. This was a project that was also started at the beginning of the year. So, now that we have landed the budget, we want to try and get a couple of other items finished this year. Are there any questions?
Thank you. And moving on to the planning department update.
I'll leave this one as brief as possible last, this evening. This was an item that was pushed from the last Cal and meeting as well. But we'll go through it as quickly as possible. Typically, we'd come about months or quarters and do an update, but we're trying to do a little more often because there's a lot going on. So, this is always our lunch sheet. I know that you can't read it, but I have copies of it. I'll put it out at the back table, so if anybody would like to see where we're at just on projects that have come in in the last year or that have come in post-mortem. And there are a couple of projects that are on there that are a little bit older that are still in the pipeline. We have projects going through planning commission and design review and through hearings. We're pretty close to having Rio Vista complete their process and start construction of their plan improvements. As you know, Walden is definitely underway. And they'll likely be in with a final plat application, my guess is in the next eight weeks. But we have created a new process to do a, what we call, like how we do pre-application meetings for when a project is new and comes in. We're also creating a process for when they want to come in and file a plat, that we start to work with them about what our expectations are, what their expectations are, what needs to be submitted. It's under statute, it's technically considered a land whose permit, and we have 30 days of process that get it to council. So, we don't want something that's not complete, our right to go forward through the process because it would just be the planning department that denied the application. So, we want to try and create more work upfront so that when it does come in, it's ready to go to council. We continually, you know, about every month, we update our development maps for development and then also for pre-applications. We do update this every month, and sure enough, as soon as we updated this map, we got another project in this week. So, I don't have it on that, and that project is to the east of Copper Hills Square, and it's called the Thayer subdivision. And it's for, do you remember how many units it is? About 15?
Mm-hmm.
15?
14?
15? This just looks at the north end of the project. We don't have anything new in the north end, but it would be in the south end. And we haven't made any other changes except for we need to get Thayer on there. We've had some pre-applications. We did actually get a commercial, technically a commercial project in Holy Innocence is doing a addition to their facility. I want to talk a little bit about long-range planning again. ADU is still on hold, pending just our capacity. We're hoping that, you know, that we're going to get some of these projects through the hearing process so we can get working on policies that we have literally a draft of or an almost draft of, and that's for the ADU and the food truck. We have started the sign code update. The review is complete for what compliance issues we have, and so we know what areas we need to update. That probably will start late this fall and go into, probably into the spring before we get that completed. We did receive our SMP grant. Council authorized us using that grant, and we're currently working on a scope of work for that. And that work will begin likely as early as January. As the mayor talked about in her message on budget, we have deferred the parks trails and open space plan pending funding and capacity in the future. It doesn't mean that we're not going to, that we're not going to do something because I think planning commission wants to take a greater role. And when you hear my presentation, the planning department, we'd like to resurrect the Parks Board, Parks and Parks Group. I think that would be a good way to help start that update process. So, stay tuned for that presentation. Conference of Plan Amendments. This one has been really hard this year because we are so busy. We do have a Riverview School District co-plan in that was received. We met with our team and our peer review team this week, and we're in a meeting with the school district and the landlord. I don't think we're going to make this year's deadline. There are some site plan issues that we've noted, and I don't think we're going to get them back to us fast enough for us to complete the review this year. So, we might have to include it on next year's docket. We have put all of them into commerce. So, our capital improvement plan was submitted and routed to commerce along with our entire co-plan docket, as well as our transportation improvement plan or tip. Just as a reminder, we have a joint planning commission and city council meeting scheduled for October... That should be 24th, sorry. Who typoed? It should be the 24th. I apologize for that. So, what are we going to be talking about there? We'll be talking about the North UGA. It's, you know, obviously, we haven't completed our internal review of that, but we have had a lot of our peer review completed. We're using Eco, essentially Eco Northwest to review our financial impact analysis. And so, they are providing, not sort of scope work, but a scope of work and how much that's going to cost. I have that discussion with their team this week, and they're going to attend this workshop so that we can start to go through some of these items and to also see what city council would like to see out of a document and a review. But we know what a basic review would look like. So, they are, Quark is going to give a formal presentation of the annexation petition. However, what I can tell you is that it won't be fully reviewed by then, but they wanted to get on the schedule before the end of the year to have council and planning commission start working on that. Current development. This is an item that is coming up that we're going to have to work on in the near future. So, Duval, Urban Village, and Walden. Both of these projects have development agreements that require affordable housing. And one project area requires 5%, another area requires 10%. The details are here, it tells you how many units. I did receive, I should say, the city received a letter from the owner that wanted to set the terms, and they wanted to look at essentially a 20-year term. And the mayor I met with the applicant said that we didn't feel that that would meet the terms of what council would prefer and want to see them long-term. So, we've had those ongoing discussions. I talked with the developer today, and ultimately, I think they're okay with what council would prefer. I think 50 years could be a long time because it's likely someday that has an affordable housing unit, it'll be difficult for them to probably do the long-term maintenance when you start seeing that type of maintenance. And so, it could be where it's, you know, 35 years. We'll have to figure that out. The challenge is that nowhere in the development agreements did it set a term or mechanism for affordable housing. And so, we're trying to figure some of these items out for our final plat. I do have a letter that I was going to hand out and talk about more, but we don't have time this evening. So, what I'll do is I'll give it to council, and we'll talk about it at the next, at the next meeting. The other item that is, has come up, and we've known about this, but we have to start working towards finality on this, is there's a commercial area involved along the Duval-Urban-Village project. And each development agreement specifies that they should come in with a commercial site plan, essentially to build the building. And that was a condition that a previous council placed on the development agreement. The hard part about that is if the market's not there, it's hard to build, to get somebody to build building and build it and fill it up. it's hard to build, to get somebody to build building and build it and, and fill it up. So there's a clause in our development agreements in our mixed use zones that allows the planning director to modify that for good cause. And so we met with the, with Toll Brothers last week. And so one of the, the items that they've brought to our attention, which we've already known, is that for the Duval Urban Village portion, there is a, um, use, the deed restrictions. And so I've printed those out, I'm going to give you those as well. So what they would prefer the city to look at is to, is to allow that to go away and then come in with a commercial development because a deed restriction is pretty restrictive. So not completely, I should say, to be set where the application for a development would have, would come in when that expires, which is in ten years. It was about eight and a half years ago that, um, that deed restriction was placed on the property. I will need to write a memo for the, you know, in the, in the near term, if that's the right thing to do, that says what our expectations of this, of the city can give them good career direction moving forward. For the project next door, which is the Walden, uh, there's not any deed restrictions on there. So I, uh, I think what I would say is that previously was essentially when like Washington Medical School came in or within X years, they would have to come in with an application. So I think it would be fair to make that same provision when the school district, wherever they're going to build them, there takes occupancy or within five years, that they have to come in with a commercial application. So I'm going to come back and, and talk to you again. I've also asked for a, essentially, a separate, uh, letter from the applicant that's from a professional that talks about, uh, commercial development in that area under both the terms of the existing restrictions. And then moving forward because Toll Brothers have been trying to market that, but when the restrictions come up, it, it's pretty painful. So you can give a copy of those and then I'd like to review that. Um, it is our expectation and Toll Brothers' expectation and desire to approach Safeway, who has a new owner, to see if they will release those deed restrictions. And so we'd like to start that process in early December. But I don't, I still have to resolve this before then. So I just wanted to let you know that I have to make a decision on behalf of the city. And I don't want to do it without coming to council and talking about it for a couple of meetings.
Councilmember Nattland. When the development agreement was signed, were those deeds and deed restrictions in place?
Uh, not for Walden because it doesn't apply to Walden. But the development agreement, um, did exist, yes, when, um, we signed the development agreement.
That's a good question. Councilmember Water.
I don't think anyone in administration or council is aware of that. It came about after the fact and it's one of those little Easter eggs that we sometimes get. Are you concluded? Because I have a few questions, and I can move through them quickly.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm very interested in that, so thank you for that. On the deed restriction issue and the provisions of the development agreement. I'll just tell you about, I'll forget about these other things and go to the thing I'm most interested in. So the applicant for the North Urban Growth Area Annexation wants to come here to give us a presentation. We will not have the benefits, I understand, of, um, city review, technical review of documentation or financial analysis prior to that. As I understand, uh, what city council does, I mean, we are really responsible for what is on our agenda. I don't know of the benefit of them coming. I don't know much about why they would want to come. We have a lot of issues to get through, budget. I, I think what the, the use of the sports field is a good issue, which is tied to budget and these others. We have a lot to get through this year. I just don't understand the relevance of that applicant coming here to give a presentation before we even have a technical review complete. And I'm willing to postpone that meeting until we have our technical review complete. Sorry, that's, that's.
Mayor President Water.
Do you see any benefit to this meeting, Carl?
It's technically a workshop that planning commission that council's invited to, but I, I would think that it would be best to have a joint workshop versus just a single workshop with planning commission only. We have completed the peer review, um, majority of pieces of that, but staff needs to sit down and have the time to then review the site plan, um, look at how it lays out, review any sort of comments that we've received. We are, I think we do feel a little behind, you know, in, in the planning department on this. It hasn't been a top priority for us because we have a lot of other projects in and we are short-staffed. But, you know, the applicant, um, I'll just say, it seems to see for that word.
So I will trust you on this one. Do you feel now is the right time to do this meeting or is this premature?
This is a discussion that you guys should have as a, as a, as a board or as a, as a council. I don't think that I should weigh in on it because I've already said that we haven't completed the review of the project. And so I think it would, in my opinion, be premature.
Okay, so this wasn't a scheduled planning, uh, workshop? It was a requested workshop?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council, would you like to have further discussion? Or is there a motion? Councilmember Nattland.
Is there another purpose of that joint meeting besides?
By the comp plan, so we'll still have a meeting.
Okay, we'll still have a meeting. One thing to mention is that it started at five-thirty on the slide. And I was thinking, that's not what I remember. And so on the council calendar, it shows seven o'clock. So if it starts at five-thirty, am I sure?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it? So it is for sure, five-thirty. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ira.
So I just, I'll, I'll move to postpone that meeting, that workshop until we're ready to have it, can we?
Uh, we, we still have the comp plan that we're going to be doing that evening.
Can I make a motion to postpone the topic? So I guess. Okay.
So in this sense, you'd be making a decision for planning commission. Uh, you could choose to not participate in that half of the meeting. I'm not sure the message that would send to the planning commission if the planning commission is interested in hearing from them. Uh, but it's up to you. Councilmember Nattland.
Could we make a motion to recommend to planning that we would prefer to postpone that topic? And then they have another meeting before that, I believe? Or no?
Not sure. I'm not sure how, I think, I think council typically doesn't make the planning commission calendar. So I've never come across this before. Ms. Thomas, do you have?
I have a suggestion. Uh, we can break the comp plan up into, I can still have the planning commission talk about the comp plan because that's scheduled, we have a meeting scheduled with them next week. So I can talk to them about the other item and whether they're ready to move it forward. And then I can do a separate workshop at council. But the reason why we're really don't going towards planning commission is because our agendas are pretty, are pretty full. But we do need to get two workshops in for the current plan amendment. We have five meetings left between now and the end of the year. So, um, and we don't want to necessarily, necessarily say that we're not going to have the workshop in general.
Councilmember Reddick.
I have a little bit different take on it. I'm disappointed that, uh, we won't have all the city review because that's just critical for our decision-making. On the other hand, I've attended most of their public meetings, if not all. And each time I gain a little bit more insight into where they're going. And I would hope that their presentation since the last one, the public presentation, has moved on pretty good. So the point I'd like to make is I also think it's a chance for our citizens to come and listen and be able to have some insight into what they would like to do with that area, um, that annexation area. It's one of our most important decisions that we'll probably make. Um, it's one of the hottest topics I've seen on the Duval Discussion Board and other places. So for me, I, I love getting as much information as I can. My sense is they're certainly trying to give the pros and sell us on their project. And I don't mind that, that's one side. Uh, and until we get the formal review by city staff, we're not going to be formulating our opinion or, or decisions on how to move forward on that. So for me personally, to help support the planning commission as well, I, I don't mind attending and listening to what they have to say and allowing us to ask some questions.
We haven't heard from councilmembers Hoag, McHenry, or Brinkie. Councilmember Hoag.
I guess my question would be whether it is going to take too much time from the staff right now when we're working so, when you are working so hard on the budget. Is, is it a timing? Should it be something that happens in November versus October would be my question.
So the challenge is, is that, and it's not just planning. There is multiple departments that review this. And our focus and energy has been on current development projects. And then we have our comp plan cycle that goes through every year. So that's a focus as well. It's been a pretty busy development year and policy year for our development and our utilities. Um, I think the, the one thing that I would say is, you know, staff's definitely not writing out a robust conversation about me. But we never want to, you know, it's not necessarily our role as staff to say no to developer not coming to a workshop. And so we wanted to honor the request and bring it, bring it forward. I do think the one item that I do want council to work on is looking at the financial impact assessment. Because now that we're having Eco Northwest look at it, I think that council needs to weigh on, weigh in with that consultant on what the expectations are for the review and what questions they want to ask. So I think maybe we should at least have that discussion at that meeting because that's a critical piece that, um, to move, to move it over its entirety really is pivotal on that one document. Because our environmental reviews come back, our tree protection stuff has come back. You know, and that's pretty close and aligned with our political policies. So that's not really technically an issue. We're still working on some, obviously, some transportation. But the meeting piece really is, you know, how does the annexation impact the city, um, short-term, mid-term, and long-term? So I think, you know, thinking about it was the, what council and the mayor said, I think at a minimum, I would ask that we at least have a meeting to talk about the financial impact assessment with our consultant. We don't necessarily have to do it at that workshop, but it might be a great opportunity for you to be with council. I'm sorry, with the planning commission. And planning commission has a lot of the financial impact assessments, not typically their role. So maybe it's an opportunity to provide some mentorship because they're the group that usually bring forward into council eventually.
Councilmember Brinkie.
So, um, is it not possible to discuss what is necessary with the commission regarding comp plan and defer the presentation of the applicant till later date? Wouldn't that work, would that work?
Yes.
So I would prefer that. I think that would make good sense because I think having a good, I always think that when planning and council get together, we can have that discussion. It's always very beneficial. And right now, really, the discussion has to be about the priorities of the comp plan and that the further discussion, I think, could go up till a later date regarding the applicant and their presentation.
Councilmember McHenry.
Basically, they came to the same thing that that could be, it feels a little soon before we have all the info. So that would be my preference as well, but, um, councilmember Brinkie said.
I think there's consensus. Um, we should probably formalize, formalize the removal of that presentation at city council's request or requesting that the city council have the planning commission remove it. They're the formal motion, so if someone would like to make that motion.
Move that we request that the planning commission move that, the presentation by larger till a later date.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Can I follow up on that? So we didn't talk about the financial impact assessment at that meeting? That was in part of your motion. Am I differing that?
Generally, the consensus would be that if we have internal conversations to have to move the process forward, I think that that's something where that's, we would look at staff to, to let us know that we're needed to chime in on a specific item. But I think in terms of, um, so if there's something that, that you need answers from us, yes, I think that's.
And that's what I'm asking.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
We just don't want to go through a presentation where it's a, puts the situation in disquiet.
I would say, or I think that would be fine because I think that won't send any discussion about the comp plan in ultimate consideration. It's a, it's an internal discussion. I think that'd be fine to have some relevance to the framework of what, uh, what the comp plan might deliver, including the annexation in the context of that discussion.
And I, I think Quatron would appreciate that we're moving forward. And I think that's probably generally what they want to see, some action taking place.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we do have a presentation this evening, but we do have an item of unfinished business. So if we don't get to it stretched earlier, we have to have it done before our next meeting. So unless there are objections, I would like to move item ten, unfinished business. One, uh, item one, Agenda Bill eighteen dash fifty-four, adopt ordinance, amending chapter five dot zero. One of the municipal code, business licenses provided for separability and establishing an effective date. And move that up for the decision right now.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much for that, that preference there. And with that, we have a presentation from Waste Management by our guest, Ms. Emily Newcomer.
Good evening. It's a little touch screen.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, members of the community. I really appreciate your time this evening. Um, my name's Emily Newcomer and I am a public sector manager for Waste Management, which is a fancy title for contract managers. So we're very closely with city staff and key stakeholders to make sure we're fulfilling. Our obligations as a service provider are, um, solving problems, being a good community partner. So I was asked, um, uh, to come here this evening to provide, um, an overview, sort of a year in review, um, in, in terms of how we've been engaging the community this past year. Um, sort of what are services we provide? I know several, there are several new councilmembers. Um, as well, I want to talk about the state of the recycling industry. Um, so it'll be kind of an interesting segue because I will talk briefly about China Sword, an Operation Blue Sky, which you'll become more familiar with if you haven't heard those terms already. So Waste Management, what do we do? So Waste Management, what do we do? Obviously, our main charge is to ensure that we collect garbage, recycling, food yard waste from residents and businesses, multifamily customers on a weekly basis. We also provide on hold bulky waste collection from curbside, we collect motor oil for recycling as well. We support the maintenance staff, providing, servicing main street litter cans in select other locations. Joe Crist and I collaborate quite a bit, wonderful. We offer discount rate for seniors and we provide free collection for city facilities. So city facilities obviously don't pay for garbage recycling or food yard waste, and we provide free service for two main city events, Duval Days and Sand Blast. So what I like to call going out the bin, yes, we're a garbage hauler, but we're very proud to serve the city of Duval. And with that comes, in our opinion, really, how do we show our investment in the community and especially the wonderful things that make this community so great? My boss always jokes that I'm going to move here. But, so in addition to providing in-kind services to all the key events, we also are financial sponsors. So for Duval Days, Summer Stage, Earth Day, Farmer's Market, Sand Blast. We have an award-winning public education and outreach team, actually. We've won two SWANA awards as well as Recycler of the Year last year from the Washington State Recycler Association. And they hit the streets every year doing onsite door-to-door outreach to businesses and multifamily residents here in the city of Duval. We have reliable collection services. We, and our customer satisfaction ratings from customer surveys, we give, customers who call are always high, ranking us eight out of 10. So, and we like to pride ourselves on responsive and solutions-oriented contract management. So, you know, if you have an issue, I want to hear about it because how are we to know to do better? So, so a few education and outreach highlights. You know, I mentioned the door-to-door outreach that we do for businesses and multifamily. Those are two of the sectors that's really, because a lot of people come in and out, new employees, what have you, it's the two sectors that are the most challenging in terms of getting them to recycle right or know the services that they have available to them. And yes, we write checks in sponsor events, but more importantly, we're actually hosting educational bits at all the events and having an opportunity to engage with the residents on recycling, right? For the third year in a row, we provide technical assistance as well as in kind donation to the firemen department for the annual pancake breakfast, always making that zero waste. This year was 96% diversion, so in that event, which is obviously you're generating a lot of food waste, your bacon pancakes, only 33 pounds of garbage was generated. So that's huge. I always like to incite a little competition between that fire department breakfast and Snoqualmie. Duval always wins. And then we're just, we're out in the community. We've worked at Duval Montessori School this year, provided several presentations. And then something that was really cool this year was Ace Rargo was kind enough to let us host an education table to talk about the intricacies of plastic because that's always one of those hard items, like what do I do with such-and-such plastic item? So, so what does this all mean in terms of waste diversion? These are the goals that a lot of cities are striving for, like to, you know, why they believe wholeheartedly in education and outreach. So Duval, for the residential sector, is at 55%, which, in keeping with your neighboring cities, you're actually right in line because Redmond, the incorporated areas, Snoqualmie are all averaging around 60%. So there's always room for improvement for everyone, so. So, that's the fun stuff, and now I'm going to transition to China Sword and Operation Blue Sky. Have any of you heard of these terms? These two terms that I've been getting a lot of media attention this year. And so it's not just a Waste Management issue, it's an industry issue, and really, the essence of it is China, July 2017, China said, you know what, come January 1, 2018, we are going to ban 25 materials, mostly mixed paper and plastics. And by plastics, I mean, think of your plastic clamshells, what, your cherry tomatoes or your blueberries come in, not necessarily your water bottles and your laundry detergent bottles, but some, a lot of the other plastics that come into consumer goods. So we're all waiting with bated breath. Come January 1, they implemented that ban. In March, they went even further and reduced the contamination, the allowable contamination limit within a bale that could be sent to China to 0.5%. So that means about every ton of recyclables, which is 2,000 pounds, 10 pounds could be contamination. And by contamination, I mean things that just don't belong in recycling bin. And then even further, in May, they transitioned to Operation Blue Sky and started inspecting all of the container ships that started coming over to ensure that they, the bales were meeting those contamination thresholds. So why, so why does this matter? Why is China so informed to recycling? And the reason is, you know, over, you know, 25% of the world's recyclables was being exported to China. You know, by 2017, actually, I should say 30%, 50% of all the paper and plastics recycled. And it's a much higher percentage on the West Coast, mainly because our shipping lanes to China. So it was a great relationship. There's always contain, full containers coming over with all the goods that we purchased that needed to go back empty, so we were able to fill them up with our bales of recyclable and they'd be able to turn them back into the products that they would ship over. However, China's growth, I mean, came at the expense of the environment, and so, you know, Chinese government, rightfully so, is doing what we did at the end of the last century and is closing their mills and cleaning up their environment. So it's caused an interruption in the industry in terms of waste management, you know, public services, recology, all, these are all the local service providers. None of us are isolated from this. It has made it more challenging to move materials. We have found alternate markets, and we are doing everything in our power to ensure the materials that come into the recycling facility are sorted, adding people to the lines, making sure that we meet that contamination threshold. So not all is lost. It's been very challenging, but at the same time, it's great, China's cleaning up their environment, they need to, and locally, we are able to have conversations that, quite frankly, we should have been having a long time ago. That it matters what you put in your recycling bin, recycling isn't free, there's value to what you're putting in your recycling bin, there are actual people who are sorting that material when it gets to the facility. So, so the market realities, it's cost challenges, there are increased costs, China's really no longer going to be a reliable market. You know, our people, customers are demanding higher quality, and that's a good thing. Education, we have the right infrastructure in place, and we can sort of start having those conversations with residents in terms of what is really important to put in your recycling bin, because at the end of the day, customers want to recycle, we want to recycle, I mean, we are one of the largest recyclers in North America, and it's various, one of our values. We just want to make sure that it's done sustainably and done right. So some local things that we're doing here to address this, at the educational level and at the contamination reduction level, we saw this, in 2013, China had sort of dipped their toe in the water in terms of some policies that they were, they were going to implement that was going to impact the recycling industry, and it didn't really come to bear as it has now. But as a result of that, we launched a national campaign called Recycle Often, Recycle Right, that is really all about educating consumers on the right way to recycle, going back to the basics and why it's important. So we really leveraged this, in fact, to actually work and feed some content to Chant Tozer, to share on Duval's social media web channels. We send out customer mailings, we really use a lot of social media to sort of get the message out. And we host tours of our recycling facility, and I actually really encourage council just right down the road in Woodinville, I think it would be very worthwhile for you to see where Duval's recycling goes. Contamination reduction strategies. Car tagging has always been a best practice that we've deployed. Admittedly, not all parts are visible of contamination, like you see in this picture, but in the event they are, our drivers are encouraged to tag the car and educate the customer as to what the issue is, and so then we can engage them in conversation in terms of removing the item so that we can come back and service it. And that has definitely refreshed our driver training, really a lot more emphasis on that. So I guess, in closing, not all's lost. You know, I think we're, everybody's going to muddle through China Sword, I think, I was raised in the trash industry through education and outreach, so I actually think this is a conversation overdue in terms of the value of recycling, if you will. I mean, trash is, is this industry where just more actually disappears at the curb, and I think you actually need to lift the hood for people so they can kind of see what goes on behind the scenes. But, so I think as it relates to Duval, your recycling program is still viable, your recyclables are still moving, and as your service provider, we look forward to a continued partnership with you. I haven't had the opportunity to meet with everyone, all the councilmembers, but I have met with a few of you and have asked sort of things you'd like to see in your future contract, your, your relationship with the service provider. And it was pretty remarkable, the commonalities, which were increased funding for city events, I mean, which I understand, the events that in Duval really make up the fabric of this community, and I think ensuring sustainability is very important. Increasing the number of locations, servicing public area cans to help minimize incidental litter, maybe help support the under-resourced maintenance staff, offer new specialized waste and recycling containers if they've not failed, I know there was a lot more traffic going to that facility. And increase public education efforts, that's one of our expertise. And, you know, how can we engage, better engage the schools? How can we raise more awareness about bear safety? I know that's an increased issue in Snoqualmie, Hawaii. And so I look forward to having that opportunity to meet with the city and discuss those opportunities. So, thank you. Any other questions? I kind of rushed through the China Sword issue a little. Councilmember Mike, tell.
Oh, it looked like you had, okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Not even like what you do with your pop water bottle?
Mayor for Timmy.
Just say, yeah, I agree, it's a long-term conversation we need to have for sure and stop using disposable water bottles and things like that. But I would hope that the councilmembers also said that we want competitive pricing and improved pricing on our garbage video. So just.
Fair. Anyone else? Councilmember Walker?
Say thank you, Emily. Thank you, do a really good job for us, and also appreciate what Waste Management does for our community, sponsorship at our events, and also taking out the trash for all of us, it's a big help, so thank you.
We're not doing that, we're not doing our job.
Councilmember Nikki? I'm just curious, where, if not China, where are the other places we're sourcing?
That's a great question. So there's about 13 million tons of material that needed to be shifted, which also is causing the challenge. But the alternative markets are still Southeast Asia, South Korea, Vietnam, India, and so the shipping lanes to those countries aren't as reliable as China, which is another reason why it's made recycling a little more challenging and added costs to the recycling, just because if you were to come on a tour, you'd probably see a lot more bales because we are, they said, oh, you have a shipping in here last week, and shipping can't, just kidding, so.
I just have one more question. Current policies with China, is that also affecting this, what they're doing with this here with these two, is it China Sword and Operation Blue Sky?
Yeah, yes. So King County has launched a Responsible Recycling Task Force. So yes, China Sword, especially on the West Coast, is impacting, has greatly increased costs to recycle for processors such as Waste Management and public services and recology because of the shipping, sorting, and just the value of the recyclables isn't that high. So everyone has identified alternative markets, which isn't going to be truly sustainable. So King County has launched a Responsible Recycling Task Force, which is going to probably convene, wrap up at the end of this year, where they've looked at, you know, long-term strategies, our domestic market developments, but in the short term, you know, we are sort of restricted, and, you know, in moving the materials, we have to shift to alternative markets, but it really starts at the curb and it starts at the education of the residents. And don't bag your recyclables, don't put your, your full peanut butter jars in your recycling bin, don't put your hoses, just really shifting the conversation in terms of what can go in the bin. Those are the short-term strategies.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I'd just like to say thank you, Ms. Newcomer. We meet probably about quarterly, sometimes a little more, to talk about what's going on, and you've definitely been Waste Management, definitely been a good community partner. And I see you personally at events all over the place, in town or other cities, really working to make sure people are educated on the recycling links, I know that's a passion of yours, and I really appreciate the open dialogue that we've been able to have, so thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. And if, there's a, Ms. Gardell has been waiting a long time, I suspect this one is relatively quick, I'm suspecting we could probably get eight more minutes if we rush.
I think I want to help.
So we've got to help Ms. Wakeoff clean up, but we'll have Ms. Gardell give us the update on the utility asset management.
Good evening, mayor and councilwoman, Ms. Gardell. So there's a bunch of information that was included in your packet this week for the asset management. We had six responses to the proposals that we got in August, took a little bit of extra time to go through them because we really did, I did want to make sure that, you know, we created a matrix and we can give everybody a fair shake. The Actabob did end up floating to the top, as you can see in the matrix Y. So if there's questions, I mean, we talked about it a little bit, so this is, you know, there is a background.
Yeah. Councilmember.
What stood out to me was the, I actually had it written on me, it was, I think they were allowing a 10% annual increase in their contract, their annual contract, and so that stood out as being higher than any of the others, and so just the risk of having something that could increase the cost so much. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes. And so what, what I did, and I talked to Arnaud with Actabob, and what I tried to do is I tried to get to a place to where we could get a four-year service contract, and over that time period, it would be a maximum cumulative increase, maximum 10%, and so we're shooting for like 2% a year. But that contract would be brought forward at a later date because, you know, we'd obviously need to flesh out the details of the contract, and the contract would not be required until we go live anyway, which would be at least three months after we roll out.
Any other questions for Ms. Gardell? All right, looks like we can move forward unless there's any objections at this point. Great, thank you so much, and thank you for staying late. So I'm going, if it's okay with council, I can give deference to Ms. Mon and Ms. Thomas to determine which one we can do in the next five minutes.
So I can, so what I can do is I can bring back the resolution for the comp plan completely.
I can, so what I can do is I can bring back the resolution for the comp plan completion. The only thing I will ask is that you potentially consider adopting one next week. Or, sorry, the next week.
Thank you. Ms. Mon.
Mayor and councilmembers, we'll make this quick. Lindsay Wong, my,
Oh, whoa!
My hands directors. Do I have to move?
He didn't signal.
Our power.
I think that's our signal.
I don't think you did anything.
I don't even know if she did. Okay, so third quarter budget amendment. Really briefly, are there, are there any questions? Because if we can get through both. Any questions? Is it self-explanatory to council? Are any concerns? Okay, so we should go ahead and move forward at this point? Is that okay with council? All right. This is not how we normally do things. We are in time constraint, our last business tonight, so. Thank you so much. And with that, if there are no objections, we will adjourn.
Exactly.